We're live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the current Mahone Bay Council. Glad to see that everyone is here. We have an audience with us as well, some citizens watching on YouTube. At the end of the meeting tonight, there will be an opportunity, if there are any questions from citizens, then we would receive and respond to those questions. Mr. Hyde, please.
I'm just having some audio issues, Dave. I think unless I'm the only one experiencing it on your end, which is not something we've ever had with your feed before, but I just wanted to let you know, I'm not sure if there's anything you can do about it.
Okay. I've got a new laptop here and I'm still dealing with it.
Well, thanks for troubleshooting them because I guess all the new council members are going to have to have them.
Yeah, right. Having a great time. My Apple stuff, I can't for some reason is not working tonight. So anyway, that's here or there. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. You have an agenda that was mailed out to you? Any additions to the agenda? Or can we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved by Councilor Carver, seconded by Councilor Now, all in favor. Motion's carried. Let's go to the minutes of the last meeting. What is the wish of council?
Would they be approved circulated, your worship?
We have a second or Councilor Bane. Motion to receive or to approve as circulated, all in favor. Motion's carried. I think we have minutes from a special meeting. I don't have the agenda right in front of me because this is on the screen.
I move they be accepted as circulated.
You, do we have a second or Councilor Feeny moved and seconded to accept the meeting minutes as presented, all in favor. Motion's carried. And let's go to item number, the first item on the agenda. Hyde, can you put the agenda on the screen, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, I say that, but I need participant sharing enabled. One of you, Kelly?
Should be fine now.
Yep, thank you. It should be up there.
Excellent, thank you. So the minutes of the two meetings, we have no delegations or individuals who are going to address council. We have no correspondence action items. We have three information items in our correspondence log. What is the wish of council?
Moves to receive and file the correspondence.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and seconded by
I'll second.
O'Neill, all in favor. Motion's carried. Let's move on to staff reports. Ever present staff reports to council?
And I'll just note, as always, we'll take questions, but the only part of the report that's updated on the first meeting of each month is just this very first section on council assignments to staff.
Yes. Anyone have any comments or questions concerning that first portion of this document? Councilor Feeny?
Mayor, item six, the expected arrival of some corroborating information from TIR. I think that was on an earlier agenda with the expectation that tonight there'd be delivered. I'm just assuming that that is, that's just the work in progress and that will come down the train track here, either November 10th or at some other date, you know, between now and Christmas, maybe.
Yeah, that's certainly the reason. So this one and two other pieces, the NSLC and the status of funding for the Department of Energy Connect Two application that we submitted are kind of all tied up together. But I do expect that even though there won't be an opportunity for a staff report in October, that there will be an update to council later in October based on the status of Connect Two, and then that should kind of move everything along. I will note that I would not be surprised if we end up having to have a conversation at that time about prioritizing parts of the council's transportation project to move ahead this fall. And I think council should expect that there may still be a conversation about what we can accomplish this fall based on the funding levels. But I'll certainly send that out by email as soon as I do have anything new.
I think Mayor, that, I think that sounds, that sounds, that sounds fine. I guess no real shock, though. The one non-financial element of the transportation study that a council sort of wants to see move along is the Cherry Street, One Way Street application. I think that some of the community members that live on Cherry Lane are, you know, have an expectation that that might be something that happens in 2020. And if, if for whatever reason we can't get, we're not able to meet that kind of timeline, I do think it's, it's worth our while just to communicate that back to the folks who live there that, you know, council, I'm sure this council and the next council will probably be, you know, supporting that. It just, we just may not be able to deliver on timelines based on something that we can't control.
Speaking of the Cherry Lane one way thing, Ayo, are we, are we talking about a couple of one-way signs and a no left?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's, that's kind of been across the board, that, you know, we, we went to CVC L and asked for professional estimates on all of these different components to apply for external funding. At the end of the day, I do think that even with having gone over these estimates with their estimator and with Derek and myself, that some of them are a bit high. And, you know, part of prioritizing them may be what we can do within our own budget. But I also think there's just an element of which ones can move ahead with, with speed. So that is when, where we know, you know, relatively speaking, what needs to be done with it. I think that the, you know, time of year is, is more of a factor for some of the other components. So, you know, I think we'll just have to see what happens, but I do believe that reasonably that Cherry Lane project will be able to move ahead this fall.
And there just, just one more brief, couple more brief questions on your, on your service stats and the bylaw enforcement item. I'm wondering, and I know we really can't speak to it directly here, Mo, but, you know, I think there is an issue around, around, I'm hearing more through the grapevine about the containers. I think we're up to four containers in town and that might be just something that we could come back to either directly by email or put that back on the agenda to talk about bylaw enforcement in that area at a later date for either this or a future council. I think that's, I think everybody's well aware of that issue at this point.
Difficult to discuss right now. Um, but I can say that the enforcement professionals involved are involved.
Fair enough.
And by the time of the next update to the section of the report, which, yeah, because of the election, there's a bit of a gap there from September 24th to November 26th, but I expect we'll have a little bit more to add at that time, what we can add publicly.
I'm going to go back to Cherry Lane. We approved that some time ago. I don't see it as a big ticket item. I really don't know why the process is bogged down for two or three signs. And the people were very enthusiastic with the decision that was made by council. That was many months ago now. And I'm, I'm just questioning why we aren't able to move these things ahead very quickly. I don't see signs as being a lot of money, even if they're temporary, waiting for the Cadillacs. I just don't quite understand the delays like that.
Well, you know, as I was saying, the Council of Feeny, the delay is because council directed us to apply for external funding. So the Connect Two program provides up to 75% funding and our total transportation projects this year were 158,000, I believe. So, you know, we're looking at about $100,000 of, of external funding there. We can take off pieces of that. So, you know, for example, if this, if this piece represents, you know, $8,000, say, and I know it's a couple of sizes, it seemed like much, but let's just say, based on the professional estimate, I believe that that's kind of what we're looking at, then we're taking off the 75% or $6,000 that would have been, would have been applied to that. So, you know, council can, and I think maybe will want to make that decision as we move into the fall. I expect we'll have word from the Connect Two program within the month. I know that they really do want people to be able to action these projects here, and they do understand what that means in terms of winter. But I, but I will, you know, I do understand council will not want to see these projects just stalled for this fall, and that's one that I think we can move forward on quickly. So take your point, Councilor Bane.
The other comments or questions?
Are you speaking to me, Mayor DeBene?
I'm sorry, I can't see your picture, Councilor Carver.
Yes, okay, so I have a question, may I?
Blocking it out. If I, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Okay. Can I, can I have a turn now?
You certainly can.
Okay, thank you. So I do have a question about the Director of Operations section, 6.1, and the first item in that section. That, that refers to the roadside and shoulder mowing. So it's the first time I've noticed that particular item in this report. And it just led me to wonder, what is the regime that they have for mowing road sides and shoulder? Shoulders is how frequent is it and what, to what extent? What does it include? What roads?
Well, it's a, it's a broad question. I mean, they do maintenance as required. So some streets admittedly backstreets, they're not on them as much. You know, there are three different factors, I suppose. There's, you know, traffic flow, occasionally vegetation's an issue. There's much more likely water runoff issues and ditch issues, and then there's the aesthetics. You know, I think most of the time, the streets that require a lot of roadside vegetation maintenance are places where there are roadside ditches or otherwise above ground stormwater drainage. And then, you know, the, doesn't happen to be areas that are necessarily the most aesthetic. So you get somewhere like Edgewater Street, which has both. And, you know, they, they may be down there more often. Long Hill Road has a lot of roadside ditches or Kinburn, but they're not, you know, aesthetically as noticeable. So there's a lot of different factors. Obviously, also in the course of a summer, different summers, there's different amounts of rainfall. So they do them as needed would be the simple answer. But I, you know, I can certainly, I think it's worth in the future in our asset management conversations, you know, I invite Derek to have a broader conversation on that subject. And if you're interested, whether or not you're on that committee, you know, I'm sure we will get there. I don't believe we have a published standard in terms of roadside maintenance at the current time, but that is something that we may want to consider.
I'm asking partly because it's something that I've noticed personally over the years and just recently in conversations with community members, the, the issue has come up a few times, people noticing mainly the aesthetics, although I certainly appreciate the, the functional issues, but it, it's the aesthetics that people have spoken to me about. So I'm just putting that out there and wondering if that is something that could be noted.
Yeah, we did have some complaints and I'm glad that Derek was able to respond and do that particularly along Edgewater and coming into town. And yes, Councilor Carver, it was all aesthetic. It wasn't for, for other technical reasons. It was just strictly for appearance of the entrance to the town.
And I think that's really important for the town to, that the, we put our best foot forward when we can.
I echo those sentiments, Councilor Carver. I have addressed the issue at least three summers in a row, the staff, about mowing the strip and particularly Edgewater Street. The other piece that I find difficult is up Clearway Street beside the cemetery. We're talking about improving the fencing, the look of the fencing around the cemetery, and you've got this jungle of growth in the ditch going up beside the cemetery. And frankly, it looks like it's terrible looking. Edgewater Street, it is aesthetics, CAO, but it's also a safety hazard because you often cannot see beyond the tall grass on Edgewater Street. We've discussed over the last years of something like a sickle mower that goes on the side of the town's tractor to facilitate keeping those grasses mowed. But unfortunately, it's never found its way into the work plan for the period. And perhaps for fiscal year one, two, we can do just that. Find a way to embrace the technology to allow us to easily keep those ditches aesthetically more pleasing, but also more functional. So I leave that to the CAO and, and his staff to, to find a way. And to be sure that when we do our operations budget in March, hopefully, that'll be one of the items on the list.
Yeah, I'll certainly talk to our Director of Operations about that.
Your worship?
Yes, sir.
We do have a sickle mower here.
A burr that goes on the side of the tractor?
Yep.
Would that facilitate keeping those ditches mowed?
It's not really going to mow the ditches. It might mow the top on the curb, but it's not going to mow the ditches because they, it's a straight blade, but it would cut down along the roadway. If you want to do the ditches, you're going to have to use that whipper snipper or something like that, but. Yep, we already have, so don't buy another one.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. How's everything? Okay. Anything else for the CAO on this one? Hearing nothing. Let's go on to the next piece. Staff report to council on the green bin collection.
Your worship, staff were directed at the last council meeting to look into green bin collection and come back with any numbers associated with the different options. I will point out, there is a typo in the staff recommendation. To council, the staff recommendation in the actual recommendation section refers to collection July through August. It is, as is noted other places in that report, that it's actually June through August. Don't know if anybody has any questions for me?
Deputy Mayor, you're on mute, sir.
Hey worship, I've moved the council direct staff to send Mr. Fram, the correspondence advising that the weekly green bins collected will remain as scheduled for the months of June through August inclusive. And further, that staff will include information about green bins alternative for collection of yard waste.
Second act, Councilor Now?
Yes.
On the motion, question? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Let's go to the next item on the agenda, which is the staff report to council on the solar connectivity policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this one is a policy. So it was originally presented to council at your last meeting, September 24th. At that time, there was a bit of discussion on the part of council wanting to see the two alternative wordings that were discussed presented here. And so that's what I've added. It's a small change. So there's essentially two wordings here for consideration. In one case reads excess power generated in a given period will be credited toward usage in future periods. And the other says excess power generated in a given period will not be credited toward uses in future periods. And I'm looking for council to provide direction to staff in terms of the application of this policy by providing a motion here to amend the policy using one of the words, wording choices presented.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes?
Mayor, I would like to move that, I would like to make the former motion. And that there will be compensation for excess, that excess power generated in a given period will be credited toward usage in future periods.
You have a second? Carver is seconded.
I'll second it there.
Thank you, Councilor Carver. So the motion is that excess power generated in a given period will be credited towards usage in future periods. CAO is, is that in immediately successive periods necessarily? Or is it at some future date or?
So this is modeled on what's done in Berwick and Anakinish, which just essentially is a rolling credit. So at the end of a month, if power produced exceeds power consumed, then a credit is tracked on the next month. If power produced doesn't, doesn't exceed power consumed, then the previous month's credit will be applied before purchasing power to make up the difference. And then in the event that the power again exceeds power consumed, then that credit will, will again carry forward. So it is possible in the case of solar that if there are a number of good months, credit can be built up over several months. And I guess when I keep saying months, I should point out, we have a bi-monthly billing. So it's, it's actually every two months.
So the credit that one achieves by generating more than one uses rolls and accumulates to some future period when ostensibly you would use more than you would have generated.
Yeah, and the policy prohibits paying out that credit amount. So if you don't have months in which you underproduce, then you're not actually compensated. That's prohibited by the policy under the board.
May I speak to why I made the motion, Mayor?
Yes, please. I can't see.
Thank you.
For O'Neill, but.
Okay.
I hear you.
Great. Well, thank you for this opportunity. So, so this is one of those moments where I'm, I'm very happy. There's been many, but there are, this is one of those very clear moments where I am very happy to be sitting at this council table to be able to discuss this, this question, because I think that it is a question that is very important for Mahone Bay and for the future of Mahone Bay. And I think that we're probably in a moment going to be hearing a counter argument for why we should not be allowing this. And that counter argument is going to run along the lines of crediting back in this manner undermines the value proposition for the Mahone Bay utility. So that if we would not, if we would credit back excess electricity that is generated that takes away from the greater whole and, and other residents. And, and I would have to concede that it, that it does. However, I think the level at which it would has been greatly overestimated by the amount that it actually would. So I think that just in terms of the, the value that we, the values we're talking about, the amount of the credit will not be felt in any significant way by any of the other customers of the Mahone Bay utility. But it will be felt in a disproportionately negative way by those very concerned and engaged citizens who invest in their own rooftop solar installations. And why I am arguing for this position in particular is that in 2019, in February 12th, 2019 specifically, this council, these exact people sitting at this table declared a climate emergency, every single person here, it was a unanimous vote, we declared that the town in Mahone Bay is in a climate emergency. And why I think that's important for this discussion is that that's one of those moments where you have to actually take a position on what you believe in, right? So if you say that you are in a climate emergency, that should actually make certain decisions that happen later down the road far easier than the other would, otherwise would be. You would, for example, if you were offering, if you have a choice between making it easier for people to put rooftop solar on versus more difficult to put rooftop solar on, you might ask yourself, hey, have we declared a climate emergency that could lend some guidance to this question? What would a town that has declared a climate emergency do in this exact situation? Are we going to treat the planet and the imperative we have to address climate change? Are we going to treat the planet as an externality to the calculation that we're going to make? Or are we going to factor in the fact that we're in a global climate crisis into this decision? We get to ask that, and we, we actually do because we all decided there was a climate emergency. So I tried to explain this to my son today. He's 11. And I said to him, so we have this decision that we have to make in Mahone Bay and, you know, there's some people who want to, you know, help the climate and, you know, we're already doing really well because, you know, we're sort of at 97% for, you know, renewable energy in this town, and that's already amazing, right? We are doing so much better than a lot of places. So, but what the decision is that we have to make tonight is like some people, you know, they want to put solar on their own rooftops. They want to be part of the future. They want to be making 21st century decisions for their families and they want to put up solar, but it's super expensive. So, so we have a choice as to whether the extra electricity that they generate is going to be given, sold to other people. And then when that person needs electricity, you've got to buy back your own electricity. And my 11-year-old thinks that that is not fair, that that is, he didn't use the word patently unfair, but is, that's the word that I use. I feel like that that would be the kind of decision that would be unfair. So I know that this has been really long-winded, but I'm clearly very passionate about this. I feel there's one correct decision to make here, and I feel like there is a regressive decision to make here. And I would like to make a progressive decision on this point that will not in fact cost the residents of Mahone Bay much relative to, relative to the option. And I would respectfully just open the floor to more conversation, but I would like to call a recorded vote on, on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, recorded vote. Comments?
Mayor, I'll just take an opportunity to weigh in briefly. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I didn't think revisiting this topic was appropriate. I think the direction that was provided to staff was to come back with clarifications to the existing policy to codify any ambiguity. This document doesn't do that. What it does is it seeks to amend the existing arrangement that, that this council's already litigated once during this term. that this council's already litigated once during this term and has provided yet another, basically a new policy, a complete, separate, distinct path forward. So I'm all for evaluating that and having that conversation. But it has to follow appropriate protocol. There has to be discussion with information, financial due diligence and so forth. So while I feel comfortable speaking about the reality that forcing our utility to buy power for a more expensive price from an individual homeowner with the financial wherewithal to decouple from the town and force the town's utility to buy that power at a higher price than they could avail of the private market is economically unjustified. And every time we do that, we're taking dollars out of the utility, which is taking dollars out of the taxpayers' pockets. That's just math. This has nothing to do with being a climate emergency, has nothing to do with the merits of solar power, has nothing to do with the virtuous nature of people who want to seek using, you know, a more appropriate forms of next generation power and cleaner energy. This is simply a fiduciary duty to make sure that our responsibilities to maintain, to have our town-owned utility avail themselves of the lowest possible source of power. Like, that's all this is about. And if the lowest source of power is, that falls within our environmental mandate can be procured off the grid, we've already made a number of strategic decisions to move forward in that way. And I think this is completely polar opposite strategy to the one we've already accepted. So, you know, I can't accept it on the logic of, you know, this is just off strategy for the utility. And it's off strategy with the solar garden. And it's, it's offset, it's off strategy on area and it's off strategy on buying from Nalcore. It's off strategy with buying from NB Power. I mean, so we've made numbers, we've made a dozen decisions in the last four years. And a decision to reverse course now at the last council meeting of the mandate for something that, by the way, nobody on council asked for, not even sure how it showed up on the agenda. Certainly wasn't anything I can recall anyone putting in a request to council to prepare for us. So I'll be, I can't support the motion, but I do believe that the motion is well intended.
Yeah.
I just have to clarify last part about where this came from and what's being presented. So, you know, again, without getting into the substance of it, councillor Feeney, this was presented here because staff are being asked to apply a policy that does not provide clarity in its application. We've had a question from a resident and we do need clarity. So we've presented two options, one of which clarifies the current practice, but makes that practice policy. And the other one, it does represent the change. And the reason we presented an alternative there is because when we scanned the other jurisdictions, we did find that, you know, it is distinct what Mahone Bay has been doing. I understand, it is absolutely, I agree with you, supportive of our overall strategy. But it is also something that is different from what Aniganish and Berwick are doing. And so we felt it was appropriate for council to decide on that basis. And obviously either decision staff will apply going forward.
Right. So I do, so I think we're all on the same page. The clause 5B in the existing arrangement, I think that is an improvement and a clarification of the existing policy. And that's what was discussed at the last meeting. Updated October 13th element is a brand new 180 degree polar opposite policy statement. I'm unaware of anyone in council who's asked for that. And I'm not aware of why it's here.
The other way around. The October 13th is the one that was requested, which clarifies the current practice of not crediting forward.
And was that not discussed at the last council meeting? And was not direction provided by council at that time?
The direction was to present it on this agenda, but we can't approve a policy at the meeting, which it was provided. And also there was no motion at the last meeting. It was just staff were asked to include this wording on this agenda for council's decision.
If I could, the motion that councillor O'Neill has made is diametrically opposed, as councillor Feeney has suggested, to what you understood had originally considered, but is the complete opposite to what's her motion, councillor O'Neill's motion, would bring the town in line with Berwick and with Aniganish. But if we continue to pursue effective, then we'll continue to fly in the face of Aniganish and Berwick and the arrangement that they have. What's the difference in the price we pay for electricity from someone who is putting power into the grid versus what we sell it for?
So we don't actually pay anyone. And then the policy does prohibit us from paying anyone. But if we had a month where rather than a credit from a previous month, the homeowner had to purchase energy, then they'd be purchasing it at the general rate that you would normally pay. So, you know, to avoid that cost by bringing the credit forward, you know, we are we are then being I can't, we're never compensating the individual. I don't want to suggest that we're compensating the individual. There's a purchase of power that has to take place to offset the power that is now being credited. And so, you know, in that month where the individual has to purchase power at our going rate, you know, we are no longer then providing power from the prior month that we didn't pay for. So we are now buying that power at our prevailing rate from NB Power, if it's 2021. I don't know if that properly answers your question. It's more of an avoided cost.
To get a feel for what
we are selling power.
What the dollar value is or the difference. Like, right, how many homes in the town right now have got solar panels installed?
Three.
What happens when it's 30?
Or 50.
Or 50.
Which is the basis of the areas' financial assessment. All of us have reviewed that, justifying the solar garden.
And is it the numbers in Berwick and Aniganish that makes it doable for them, but not for us?
I would suggest that the numbers are. Yeah, I think when they took on the policy, there was, in all three cases, a choice that was made. Like councillor Feeney had said, I wasn't here for the conversations. And I apologize if council was very definitive in this, but just simply didn't reflect it clearly in the policy of it. Staff are working with the policy. We don't have any way to know what council's discussions were. But Berwick and Aniganish, you know, their practice most closely mirrors what you see in other jurisdictions where somebody's goal is to offset their power usage. So, you know, they design their home system on that basis, attempt to adequately estimate their power usage. And they usually want to do it in a way that comes down right on the average, so that they're not overproducing consistently every month. They're also not underproducing consistently every month. So our system dynamic would suggest that you only build the solar scale that would, you know, allow you to be guaranteed to never overproduce. And, you know, I think it's just a question of what installers are looking at, you know, when they come around to your home and what they're promoting and what people want, which is generally to offset their home usage. So, you know, if people are conscious of our policy being distinct, and I think this clarity would bring that for a solar installer, for a homeowner, they can design their systems on that basis so that they're not spilling excess onto the grid. But I think that, you know, the typical design is to your average usage swinging back and forth and taking advantage of that credit, whether that's a credit or whether in some jurisdictions there is compensation.
And originally, council had determined that there would not be a credit. That's what you're but there needs to be some clarification for staff. Is there are cases where the policy that council has approved not clear, councillor Feeney?
Right. And Mayor, when this item, which was well litigated to and a half years ago, was discussed, the reason why council, to clarify why council took that path was there is a recognition that that program does exist in Nova Scotia Power regions. It exists. And, you know, customers avail of it all the time. In our circumstance, with a negative cash flow utility that doesn't make any rate of return, let alone a regulated rate of return. And with strategies that were going to unfold, which we're going to try to unlock lower average like consumption prices, NB Power deal, Nalcore buy off the grid deal, solar garden deal. Our plan had those ideas in mind. So the question fundamentally came, why would we buy, why would we lock ourselves into a purchasing power from wherever, whoever that would be higher than we could buy off the street? Why would you buy a $5 gallon of milk? Why a $3 gallon of milk? Why would you pay $1.25 a liter for gas when you can buy the same gallon of gas for a dollar? And that was really the thinking. It has nothing to do with environmental sustainability, because we're buying, as councillor O'Neill already said, we're already buying far in excess of our obligations for green sourced power. This is really around, and really, the other question is that I think we've all kind of gotten around. Do we have a moral obligation to financially support people that have their own personal financial wherewithal, that they can put, you know, $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 rooftop solar systems at the expense of other citizens that are on fixed incomes, which will be notionally forced to pay more power because our overall power costs for the utility go up. That just never made any sense to me.
Thank you. Councillor O'Neill, you made the original motion. Would you like to comment?
There's an awful lot to unpack there. So I'll just bite at some of the edges. So this is, I guess, one of the first things I'd say is one reason to buy, you know, $4 milk would be if that milk is produced locally and you want to buy it from your neighbors and you want to essentially shop local, you may want to pay a little bit more for whatever it is that you're buying. That might be something you'd want to do. I do shop local and I like to know, you know, I would love to live in a community where I am buying power from my neighbors and that we are all contributing toward the resilience that is Mahone Bay. So that's one reason. And I think that I'd just like to say that, you know, there's a lot going on here and it's not just math. I think that, I think that the way that the doubling down of this, of this policy wording, one of the implications is that we're really actively discouraging middle-class people from putting solar installations on the roof. That's an actual intention of this. So we, and councillor Feeney is nodding, he would agree that the intention of of preventing people from participating in this way in their own homes, is so that they can't afford to put solar on their roof. But what will happen, and the CAO has described this, is that when a solar installer comes around, they're going to take in all of the variables. And maybe instead of putting in a 2 kilowatt system or slightly larger on their rooftop, what they will do is they'll take a look and say, okay, well, you should be putting in a system for June, July and August, and that is a smaller system. And then they lock in. The house locks into that. And what the problem, one of the problems with that is, is that that is a moment in time. That is a decision, a long-term decision being made with today's numbers. And what you actually have, so today's numbers are the prices of solar installations. It's very expensive. So that this strategy will work. It will prohibit residents of Mahone Bay from putting solar panels on the roof. That will be a very successful strategy, because middle-class people can't afford to do it. Only very wealthy people can afford to do it. Okay. So then, but what will happen is the price of solar is going down year after year after year after year after year. And where that person probably should have put a much larger system on their house that could factor into some potential strategy for area and for Mahone Bay Solar Garden, it will actually freeze that decision in 2020. Right? So it actually is preventing residents of Mahone Bay from an opportunity to be part of the distributed energy system of the future. So I just want to leave that there. That's one of those unintended consequences when you actually make a decision for a moment in time and double down on a regressive approach. That is one of the very likely possible implications of making that kind of a decision.
Mayor, one last brief comment on the topic. Like, as far as I'm concerned, like, I believe council collectively, in a seven to zero vote, voted in support of proceeding with applications in the federal provincial government to support a community solar garden. I believe everybody on council voted for that. The fundamental core prevailing pillar of that strategy was to offset individual installations of solar panels on roofs. Like, that way, it wasn't financial. It was $23,000 a year of net savings to the utility on the back of a $6 million investment. You know, it was really, it was around, how can we all collectively together benefit? So, yes, this is absolutely, this is all it is. We're trying to do something together as a community. And if for every one person who goes their own way and does their own thing, fair enough. Like, as I expressed in the last meeting, no one's stopping anyone from putting a solar panel on the roof. If you altruistically want to go do that, great. But, you know, the person living on a fixed income down the road doesn't need to financially compensate you for that. You're on your own if you go do that. Now, as a town, we've got a big, big project in the solar garden and it's premised on making sure that people have another alternative. And we've all been through two or three briefings. I think we had one just a few days ago. So fundamentally, this does, to me, this just comes down to follow the strategy that we've all agreed upon. This amendment is not following that original strategy. And that's all it is. Just, you can't be all things to all people. In this case, we're on the solar garden path. And until the government tells us we're not getting the money, then maybe this will get back on the agenda. But as long as that is the plan, that's the plan.
Does anyone else wish to comment? Councillor Curver?
Well, I don't see it as an all or nothing, or all one way or all the other way. I think we can have both. And I don't like the idea of forcing people who have installed their own solar systems into a box. I find that objectionable. I would rather have a system where people have choices. And we've talked about the fact that it will not likely make a huge financial difference. I may have misunderstood, but that's my understanding. And we've talked about the solar garden as an opportunity for people of all income levels to buy in to the philosophy of solar power. And which is one reason why people put it on their roofs too. They believe in the philosophy as well as in the finances. But I don't, I think we can have both. I don't think it has to be all or nothing.
Okay. We have a request for a recorded vote. A town clerk, would you read the motion, please? A town clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Certainly. Motion by councillor O'Neill, seconded by councillor Carver. The council amend the solar connectivity policy so that excess power generated will be credited toward usage in a future period.
Let's begin, councillor Bean.
Negative.
Councillor Carver?
Pro, for, yes.
Do, councillor Feeny?
I'm a N, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Nos?
Aye.
Councillor Now?
Aye.
Councillor O'Neill?
Yes.
Yes. M and A as well. So by a vote of five to two, the motion is defeated. So, Mr. CAO, are you comfortable that the clarification to staff is now agreed upon?
No, I'm not. I'm hoping councillor Feeny will jump in and make a motion to amend the policy with the other wording that was presented. And then if that were approved, and sorry to Joe to put you on the spot, it could be anyone, but you did speak eloquently in favor. And then when we have that, then we would be in a position to say we had clarity.
And councillor Feeny, when you do your motion, you want a recorded vote?
Is that necessary? No, no, Mayor, I believe, I believe the will of council's been, you know, already expressed on a, on a number of occasions over a number of years. But I do believe that the CAO's request for some clarification will, will help staff talk about the issue with, with people in the community. So I do think that this will help staff with the clarity and therefore I'm pleased to move it forward. And I'd move that staff provide amendment to the attached solar connectivity policy issue. And that would be, that there would be no compensation to the customer from the utility for any excess power generated by the customer. Excess power generated in a given period will not be credited towards the use in future periods.
I'll second the motion.
I just wanted to say really briefly that I thought it was great to have a council here where we're able to debate the best way to move forward with renewable energy and where everybody around the table is pursuing that common goal. And we're just looking at the policy solutions that will get us there most effectively as a community. So, you know, that's, I think it's a pretty great discussion to be able to have with a council. I just wanted to thank everybody for engaging in all the pros and cons in this way and a, in a manner that our residents can, can look on.
I think the sum total of this council's support for the notion over the last two years, the whole climate change approach to energy and the energy alternatives, that this council, the outgoing council certainly should give itself a pat on the back for a job well done that other municipalities can take as an example. Okay.
May I speak to that, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I, I don't have many opportunities beyond this evening to, to speak to this council on, on this topic. So I just thought I'd jump in and with my agreement fully to what you've just said, I think that this council has an awful lot to be proud of. We do the hard work. We have lots of conversations and, and I think that every single, but every single person on this council is trying to do the best that they can to, to progress the, the town of Mahone Bay utility and address the climate crisis. And, you know, we don't always line up on the same side of these arguments. But I just wanted to say how much I've enjoyed the conversation with everyone and, and the respect that I have for everybody on this council. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
On that note, we'll have the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion is passed. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Okay, let's go to the next item on the agenda, which is the staff report on trees.
Right, I'm just bringing this up on the screen, but while I'm doing that, I just wanted to say that this report is an attempt to address a number of motions that council put forward. They aren't necessarily all entirely related or exactly related, so I hope everybody would forgive me and, and maybe understand in reading this why I wanted to address them together. But I think it's important that we kind of see the interconnectedness of the different issues. That does mean that at the end, this report boils down to a recommendation may seem reductive, given all the things that have been put forward here. And I guess, you know, I'll just preface that by saying that I believe that that is an important step in the right direction, along with actions council has already taken, such as the plan review. But certainly there are a number of different items that are discussed in this report that you may feel are not fully reflected in the motion here and, and could be revisited in budget or otherwise. But I do have the motion that I'm recommending up on the screen here. I'm happy to take any questions.
Councillor Carver? From you, councillor Carver.
Yes, I have trouble finding the, the button. I, I just want to say how much I appreciate this omnibus bill that staff have brought forward because it, it covers a huge, it covers a huge amount and expresses the value of the town's natural assets in a very tangible way. I'm very happy to make this motion. And I also have a question about the nature of the training that was mentioned in the body of the report. And specifically, I have a question about how that training will be implemented. When I looked at it, it's, it's very, very comprehensive. And I really would like to see some detail in how that training would be actually operationalized for our staff. So if we, if we can just have a bit of feedback from staff on that before going to the motion.
Yeah, absolutely. So as far as the training goes, I mean, obviously it's two-part, as outlined there, is to, to attempt to build capacity within our staff, but then also to acknowledge the need to rely on contractors to maintain a, you know, and essentially a base level of, of expertise that is not something that realistically we could have the capacity for on staff. And so there will be projects on which we will acknowledge the need to bring in an arborist and hopefully on an annual basis, we'll be able to flag areas where we know that safe vegetation maintenance is expected with the utility. We usually do know which areas of town are likely to be done the coming year and have a contract arborist to come in and take a look at that along with our staff. But between those occasions, when we have the opportunity to have contracted resources on, there is that sort of level of competence within our staff. There are a lot of, you know, written materials specific to that ANSI A300 standard. We, we do need to make those manuals available to staff. But I think that there are also some opportunities with, you know, the same arborist contractors that we would, we would rely on to provide field training to help supplement that. So I think that my, my hope would be by contracting with one of the large providers, you know, not to name names, but it's folks like Asplund, which are, you know, big international companies, that we can identify, you know, practical way to get that training onboarded to our field staff. I think it's important to acknowledge the breadth of responsibility of the relatively small crew that we have, so we're not sending people away for, you know, weeks at a time or hiring someone new to, to bring, bring this on to our team. Although obviously we'll look at that in hiring decisions down the road. So that's my thought, is that we'll, we'll look for opportunities with the contractor that we identify to do field training and to kind of get our, our staff up to that level, supplementing the purchase of materials.
Thank you. And while, while I appreciate the, the value of the free, the field training and the episodic nature of that opportunity, I am concerned that there is not a proactive approach to ensuring that our staff who are managing the trees and green resources without some, something more than reading a manual. Several years ago, there was an initiative planned on the part of the town of Bridgewater to jointly provide training to municipal staff from all the units in the area. And I wonder if that idea could be pursued. So that it, so that, that, rather than being left by chance, there is a very definite proactive approach.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly be on the lookout for those opportunities. And I can follow up specifically with Bridgewater. You know, I think we're always looking at that with our, with our fellow units here. So whether it's on fall prevention or traffic signing or anything else, you know, we try to combine the training. So yeah, if there's anything we can find from Bridgewater, we'll, we'll look into that for sure.
I, I may have to at some, at some point come back with a motion. But at the moment, I'll, I'll, I'll go with what we have here. That I move that council direct staff to prepare a proposal for the FCM's municipal asset management program for data collection and the development of management plans for the town's natural assets to be presented for council's consideration no later than January 2021.
Other comments?
I'll second it, your worship.
Okay, thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Feeny?
Well, I think that I'm just, there's a sec, is this, there are two motions today? Councillor Carver?
The signage one probably disagrees.
I see that was separate, so I'm only making the first one.
Fair enough.
I just want to check the, can we put this, the motion back up, please, CAO? Yes. I had the same concern when I read this. And it, it's in a number of different locations throughout the text of the article or the, the response that was provided. You know, it talks about that our town consists of about seven hundred and sixty acres of land. One point two square miles of the seven point six acre, or the hundred and, the seven hundred and sixty acres, five point two percent are owned by the town. That's either forest or parkland or cemeteries and some naturalized woodland as well. When I read through this, I see references to trimming town trees, natural assets in our asset database. It talks a lot about assets in the town, trees in the town, forest in the town. I think it needs to specify town-owned property. Not trees in the town. Because that alludes to the trees that are on private property. This is an issue for town-owned property, not private property. Certainly educate the homeowner, educate the property owner about trees and, and how to deal with issues. And arborists have trees inspected. As a former councillor, once we're surrounded by trees on three sides in Mahone Bay. Start preventing property owners from dealing with their own property would be a travesty. The way this is worded, it does not specify town-owned property or town-owned trees. Town, town trees. I've got trees in the town. Deputy mayor's got trees in the town. We all have trees in the town. But this policy or this program should be relevant to the trees that the town owns, that five point two acres of woodland and cemetery and whatever. I would suggest an amendment to this motion so that it talks about for the, the towns, the town-owned natural assets. Natural assets, but it be town-owned. I can't make that motion, unfortunately. The amendment, but someone else can.
And that certainly was the intent of the recommendation with the capital T there, but somebody could find that lacking in clarity. So certainly that wouldn't, wouldn't change the intent of the motion.
No, it would not.
I, I would re, reframe the motion to say management plans, plans for the, for town-owned natural assets.
I agree.
Thank you, councillor Carver. The secondor agrees.
Yep.
Okay, council, the motion then that council direct staff to prepare a proposal for the FCM's municipal asset management program for data collection and the development of management plans for the town-owned natural assets to be presented for council's consideration no later than January twenty-one. All in favor? I can't see all the hands, but anyone opposed? Good, okay. Thank you.
There's a quick question if I could.
On that. What about?
I see at the end there, it says about a town of tree committee. Is that still in effect or is that something that's brought back in or?
So the trees, the trees committee bylaw is a current bylaw of the town. Now, when we adopted the committee's policy, it was acknowledged that we were no longer using a tree committee as defined in the bylaws in operational committee. So it's a, it's, it's part of a former structure of government that no longer exists. That being said, the bylaw is still on the books and there's an expectation that we would revisit it and at that time discuss whether the intent of the bylaw, which, you know, that they may have prescribed the mechanism of the treaty committee, but the intent was regulation of and maintenance of trees on both public and private land. The public land part is covered by our structure, which places that responsibility under director of operations. We've had lots of conversations about how we best use that responsibility. But the private land part is still something that, you know, is, is not discussed, is not otherwise covered by any other town bylaw. So when we get around to a point where that bylaw could be repealed, council can discuss at that time if there is any intent behind it that is not adequately covered elsewhere. But the recommendation of this report was that council wait until the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw review period was over. Because that would give us a better sense of whether private trees were adequately protected by the provisions of those bylaws or required additional regulation. And, and I think that is a good subject that will be discussed in trade-offs where you're looking at infill versus sprawl, protection of the urban tree canopy versus the natural woodlands. So there is some, some discussion within that plan process. And then after that, yes, council will need to take a look at that trees committee bylaw for, for repeal or revision.
Thank you.
And I noticed in the tree committee bylaw that one private property in spray wired. That's how outdated I think notion is. I was just advised that my volume is, is a still a problem with it. It's something on, on this laptop. I don't know what it might be, but I inhabit. For to the IT people.
Well, Mayor, you've got four years to get it fixed.
So I haven't stopped sharing the screen because So I haven't stopped sharing the screen because as was pointed out, I think Council Feeny had asked about, there was a second recommended motion here just because I didn't want to forget. Didn't fit in with the rest of the report at all. So I, so I created a separate motion just to carry that forward to budget. If council is so inclined, so I'll just leave that there. If anyone wants to make that motion, otherwise we'll leave it on the table.
Council Feeny? Mayor had moved the council refer improved park signage to the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget process for further consideration.
Second.
Second, or no?
Mayor, that was just before we vote on that, you know, I think this topic did come up at the heritage advisory committee last month and there was you know, a lot of, a lot of committee support for improved signage, especially around the aquatic gardens. And that area interpretation. And I know we've got a deferred beautification initiative, which can get recrafted next year. So hopefully this will augment what we've already kind of got in our in our priority list on, under that program.
I was at a middle service at the park cemetery. And a person fell and was injured. One. And it took eight minutes to explain to the person on the phone where the park cemetery was. Because there's no sign with a, a road number, if you will, down on Kinburn. They're really difficult. You know, the person is sitting there, laying there with a broken arm, as it turned out. Get the ambulance. Deal with it. Rather elderly. They didn't have a street number. So it's I hope is part of this new wave finding sign. Look at issues as minor and seemingly as that's the way to the cemetery. But in fact, this person waited for medical help. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor. Move and seconded? All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay. Let's go on to the next item. CAO, can you enlighten me? I can't see it on my iPad here. Next agenda item. There we go. Age friend, oh, COVID nineteen. Nothing going on there. COVID nineteen, there's nothing, I don't think that I can add other than what you're seeing in the news, the situation in, in Quebec, Ontario, B C. Now in New Brunswick. The potential or the consideration for reducing the size of the Atlantic bubble. At the chamber chat tonight, first one that they've had since March. They did talk about the impact of COVID on businesses in the town. The suggestion was the B and Bs in particular. Those dealing with the accommodation side of it have been adversely affected because most of the business we've been seeing during the summer season have been day trippers. Eighty percent of them from around Nova Scotia and most of them from Metro, which is great for the vendors and eateries, but not so much for the B and Bs. They're they're looking at ways of keeping that momentum going, not the least of which is the upcoming Christmas festival. More about that to come. Okay. Councilor Carter, age friendly community committee. Got the report. Are there any questions? From the draft minutes?
Yeah, sorry. I was just going to add something to the COVID situation in relation to the chamber. I thought there, the statistics that they reported for the visitors at the visitor information center were astonishing. They had twenty eight hundred visitors.
Yeah.
The vast majority of whom were from Nova Scotia. But in, by comparison, the visitor information center in Block House had close to a thousand and also the same, same in Lunenburg Town. The Block House Hill. In fact, they, they moved their visitor information resources down to the the museum in Lunenburg. So the, the chamber did a phenomenal job in keeping the visitor information center open this year and be welcoming visitors. So that really augured well, I think, for activity in the town. Yes. So the age friendly community committee, I don't have really anything to say other than that we had a really good conversation with Jason for the plan, the whole May project. People really appreciated that opportunity to provide that input.
Right? Provide the agenda, please. Let's go to the asset commen, uh, management committees draft minutes.
And I'm just not entirely sure because I can never know between teams and Zoom. Are you seeing the committee minutes now or the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm actually seeing the proposed motion.
Yes. So sorry if I got a little disjointed there when I was loading up the different minutes then. I, I wasn't sure if everybody saw them all flipping back and forth on the screen. So apologies for that. Yeah, I loaded this one up. Just wanted to highlight the motion since I think this may be the first time the asset management committee had provided a motion. So for this is an unusual one because the mayor is the chair of that committee and the mayor's not usually making a motion here. So perhaps Richard is the other member of council if you want.
Is to make that motion. So I'll move that council approved the draft asset management posters and fact sheets developed by the committee for the public distribution.
Second.
Somebody seconded? I'll second this.
I think John did. Sorry, I'm still getting the minutes up on the screen.
Okay, Council Feeny?
Mayor, just, um, so I'm not sure if this, uh, if this really needed a motion or not, but I'm, I'm happy to support it. But we'd like to provide staff with as much flexibility as they need as these posters get micro edited. And, you know, suggestions come in to make further improvements to them. When we get some feedback from the community. I think these posters really would be viewed as living, living documents that will evolve and change over time. So when, I think when we, when we say we're approving it, we're not approving it so that it's never going to be altered. We're just sort of approving it to say amazing job. I'm glad these are introduced, but you know, I certainly wouldn't want Maureen to have to come back to council to ask for a I to get dotted or a T to get crossed. So that was the only, I think we're all on the same page, right?
Think it's an important point because there were already a few suggestions given by members of council on seeing these come out and especially with the fact sheets and, and they aren't intended to be living documents, like you say, but also the committee to check in, especially at this point where we are at the end of of a term with committee members and to sort of show council the work that's been done to date and indicate that we are going to be using this work to put some stuff out into the public now. But we will continue to improve them going forward, of course.
Did have quite a protracted discussion at the meeting. Both the, the posters, the fonts that are being used. The colors of lettering versus the background coloring. And the authors of same and staff had committed to, to do the research or to talk to whoever they need. Make the necessary changes to make those posters as compatible with as many people as can be.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we had the agreement on like the wording in general, at least to point where now it's not going to be a constant back and forth. So they'll do a review of the size and font on them now. And then they can make sure that whatever they select, we've got the wording and, and then we're good to go. So yes, you're right.
Get a little book. Council Carter?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to ask staff, do, if, whether or not we have a policy or guideline written or accepted about following accessible community, accessible guidelines, accessibility guidelines in our communications. I guess I was
I can just say we don't, uh, Council Carter, um, you know, right now the province has left us in this position as municipalities of doing our best. They've indicated that there will be standards forthcoming and one of those areas is print and digital media. That there will be standards forthcoming. In the absence of those standards, municipalities have been sharing best practices and doing our best to identify what we can do. But, you know, at the end of the day, there will always be some argument that a different approach might have served some people better. And until there is a standard that we can peg it to, I think we will be a moving target of just doing our best based on what we know. So any, any examples, obviously, though, are great.
But I'm, I guess I'm feeling curmudgeonly tonight. At that being said, I was disappointed to see again the, the, the white font on pale backgrounds when it's been discussed several times before.
Uh, we've just asked them to hold off on that change because I didn't want to push too much with changing it while we were in progress. And now that all of them have come to council, we're going to ask all of them to have that oversight. So that's why you haven't seen that change yet. Not that it hasn't been noted, it was in the minutes.
Right. The, the, what I'm disappointed is that it, even though we've discussed it several times before, the, the, the material was presented like that. I will rest my point now.
Okay, anything else? Right? Let's go on to the MJ SB draft minutes of August.
We're in discussion on the, I think we're still in discussion on that motion.
Which one?
Accepting of the posters.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Haven't voted.
Pardon me?
We haven't voted on the poster motion.
No, we, we have a motion on the floor though, don't we? Carried away with these discussions. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Getting that one up. So let's go on to the MJ SB draft minutes. Comments or questions? SB?
Mayor, I think just to acknowledge that, uh, that was Sue, uh, Sue's last meeting. And the, the members of Joint Services Board were, uh, you know, were in a position to wish Sue well for all her hard work. And you know, many councils around the table have had the opportunity over the last, you know, ten years or so to work with Sue and it's been an amazing transformation, even in the last four years. And in large part due to her leadership. And she'll really be missed. I'm, I know you and, and some of the other councillors and mayors are, are working on her replacement, but that's going to be a tough job because she did an incredible job. She was an incredible resource and very, it's going to be very difficult to replace someone of that kind of talent.
Have two candidates left in the process to select for her replacement. And actually tomorrow morning, there are face to face interviews. Dates and the selection board members in Bridgewater. So we're, we're getting closer. For our candidates. There is an MJ SB meeting, I think, tomorrow night. Yes, yeah. Special meeting. Okay. Let's go on.
Okay.
Who? Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Report.
Yes, as you, as usual, the, uh, the report is there about the activities of, of the, um, the program uh, during the previous month. So that was September. They're still carrying a, a big look, uh, caseload and Mahone Bay is still well represented there in terms of the, the numbers of clients that they're seeing. The, unless there's any questions about the report. I just want to make one other bit of information of a bit of information available. Any questions about the report? Nope. Well, um, the public library has received funding from the United Way to do it what, what has been called in the past, a telephone assurance program. It's called caring calls. So they have hired a really terrific person to reach out to seniors. So they're receiving names and numbers of people who would be willing to receive caring calls. It's a way of trying to address social isolation amongst seniors. And I think it's a really, really good program and very much needed. So if there's anybody that you come across of who might benefit from that particular kind of call, their new hire Marilyn has just away with her and I know, and I'll tell you how I know is because I received a call from Marilyn and I said, why are you calling me? And I, you know, I'm a senior clearly. But she said, we're going through our records and checking our birth dates. We're, we're doing it on the basis of birthdays. But I had the personal experience of her approach and she was really, was a really, really nice. I can send, I can send you the poster by email tomorrow.
Hey, I think that is the end of our regular agenda. You have an in camera. Would you like to, do we have any questions from the public?
No, there are no questions from the public.
Before the public leaves us, I would like to publicly recognize that Council O'Neill, Bane, Deputy Mayor Nos will not be back for our new council in November. They have they done yeoman service or would it be yo person service? And contributed much to the success of this council. I personally would like to thank all of you. Who will not be returning for making my job easier. Do hope that continues in November. But thank you very much. And with that, I would entertain a motion to go in camera.
I'm out.
All move. Do we have a secondor? Councilor Nos. CAO, are we going to stay here or go to?
I think we can just get Kelly's verification when the YouTube has been closed down and then we should be okay to stay here this time.
Just give me.